This is, the first one I did was a small one. This is a much bigger one, so hang in there with me. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg as well as the news graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, start with recognitions.
First item under recognitions is the proclamations. Laura has those.
Hello, everyone. The state of Wisconsin has issued the following proclamations. For the entire month of March, it's the Music, Art, Dance, and Theater in Our Schools Month. March 6th through 12th was the National School Social Work Week. March 7th through the 11th was the National School Breakfast Week. March 13th through the 19th, Child and Adult Care Food Program Week. And we're recognizing for April 25th through the 29th, Out of School Time Professionals Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The next two items under recognition is CHS Sports Recognition and CHS Robotics Presentation. Casey Bowles, high school principal, is going to say a few words, John, before you hop on the podium there. It is a celebration of high school night. We have three presentations from high school. Casey?
I want to introduce Mr. John Hanem, Athletic Director Extraordinaire.
Oh, nice.
I'm blushing. Thank you, Casey. Thank you very much here. I'm excited to share the many accomplishments of our winter student athletes. Before we get into that, I always like sharing some things about our culture. That's always a focal point of not only, you know, our high school here, but we like to tie in our school district. So if we, if we kind of go around here, if you start in the upper left-hand corner and the upper right-hand corner, we have our school nights. So those two are from Thorson. We do this with all of our schools. So you see some basketball players recognizing past teachers, which is always fun and exciting. And then in the upper right-hand corner, you have the introduction line for starting lineups, which is probably one of the longer introduction lines you'll ever see. So the students really get a kick out of this. They get excited to be around our players, to be up at the high school, and it's something that we really enjoy doing. I appreciate all of our principals doing this, and it's something that we've been doing now for five years. In the middle, we have a picture of our student athletes from the spring, this past spring and fall, recognizing our conference championships. So there were a lot of teams to recognize, so that was a lot of fun. They had their trophies there, so we did that during our graft and doubleheader during halftime of the girls' game. And then in the lower left-hand corner, this was our first-ever winter pep rally. And this was driven by our students and staff. So it was something that was, you know, was recommended by them. Our administration thought that there was a lot of merit, and this is something we wanted to do. And you see a game of dodgeball taking place here. There was also a dance that went along with this, and the students really enjoyed this. And, you know, it just really enhanced the atmosphere during a time of the year that you can really be a lull during the school year. Then finally, in the lower right-hand corner, something that the students recommended at the beginning of the school year, teams will support each other. And again, this is just straight from the students, not my recommendation at all. This is the hockey team that was at a girls' basketball game at some point in the season. So I just wanted to share, these are just a few examples of many that I, that I could have shared with you. So another exciting event that we had, a real staple of the district here, is our Hall of Fame Ceremony for Athletics here. So we just have three outstanding individuals here. So you have Karen Supal, Chip Rank, and Rick Boozer, just tremendous individuals that really represent our athletics and school district and community in just, in outstanding way. They're great people, and if you were there, their speeches were just moving. They were, they were just, you know, the passion and, you know, how they remembered their time here. It was, it was a great event. So if it's something that you've never attended, I encourage you to do it. Something that we hold every two years. Now moving on to our accolades from the winter sports season. First up here is girls' basketball. So we have Claire Deener, who is First Team All-Conference, Reagan Paul, who is also First Team All-Conference. Both of them recently, very recently, were just named Honorable Mention All-State. And then we have Mary Strobel, who is Third Team All-Conference. And something that is very, is just incredible here is the Team GPA. If you see that up there, not only is that number one in Division Two, that is number one in all divisions for boys and girls. Okay? Just across the board. So our girls' basketball team really knocked it out of the park. There's just some true student athletes there. And then there were some real milestones this past season in the girls' basketball programs, was taken this left to right here. Our assistant coach, Pat Moore, earned his 300th win as an assistant coach. Claire Deener became our all-time leading scorer in girls' basketball history. And then Dave Ross, who's been our longtime coach, earned his 400th career win. And then moving on to boys' hockey, we have Drew Octor, who is First Team All-Conference, Henry Hunt, Second Team All-Conference, Patrick Smith, Second Team All-Conference, and Spencer Dahl, who is Honorable Mention All-Conference. And we also have, we oversee a co-op for girls' hockey, so we have Jillian Billsborough here, who is Second Team All-Conference. If you're wondering about the different colors on the uniform there, they're not orange and black. Okay? And then our ski team, our boys' ski team qualified for state, so these are the members right here. So we have James Hayden, Max, Jack, Cole, and Keon here, all qualified for state. And then Jack Brooks is the head coach. He is a teacher at Thorson Elementary School. And then last, we have our boys' swim and dive team, and I think we're all well aware of the accomplishments they've had recently. They were state champions last year, two years ago. They were runner-up, and they were, again, Division Two runners-up this year. And Isaac Flag was a state champion in the 200 IM and also in the 500 free. Okay? So I mean, he's just a special talent. Matt was a state champion in the 100 free. And then the other members of the team, and this is just a special group right here, we have Charlie Guit, Henry Kane, Hayden Rose, Evan Viera, who's the member of the team who dives, and then Max Schmidt and Eli Monet here. Okay? So does anyone have any questions about the winter sports season? We have our first home spring event tonight here, Girls Across is competing as we speak. All right? Yep, that is all.
This is great. Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, John, I'll just say, I like the fact you're tracking on the GPA.
Yeah.
That's impressive. You know, I suspect you do that every year?
Yeah, yeah.
That's very impressive.
Yes. All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so continuing with the theme of celebrating all things Cedarburg High School tonight, I am pleased to introduce Mr. Dan Kinnis and his World Tournament-bound Robotics Team.
As Casey mentioned, I am Dan Kinnis, head coach of FRC 3197, formerly known, or fortunately known as the Hex Hounds, and have brought with me tonight a few guests. Just give a little wave. I brought Zach, Yuri, Leah, Jackson, and Max. This kind of compromises most of my senior leadership team this year. And with them, they brought their 2022 World Championship qualifying robot named Styx. The reason we're coming here tonight is not just to show off our robots and the, what we've done, but to let you guys know that we did qualify for the World Championships through a chairman's award. So as Leah is displaying, we won a blue banner, the first blue banner that we have ever won. And I don't know if you guys got a copy of what a chairman's award is. I think I left some copies with Brenda.
I was there.
The chairman's award is the most prestigious award at first. It's the hardest award to win. It doesn't just recognize this year's accomplishments, or rather, the timeline of accomplishments, right? So looking at what we've done over the past 13 years really shows this award.
Wow.
I don't know if I could speak about it for, I don't know, an hour or so. Todd gave me 10 minutes. But really, it's a...
I anticipated 10 minutes of questions on the board.
Right, probably. Really what it embodies is everything that we've done through referendum, curriculum, and our program. We do have a brief video that I'd like to show. I don't know if we have that queued up real quick. We do have to submit a video for chairmans that's played after your announce. So a quick video about our chairman submission.
Hex Hounds, FRC Team 3197, a team of innovators and creative problem solvers that have been changing our hometown of Cedarburg, Wisconsin for the past 13 seasons. While embodying the message of first, we change the culture of our community and beyond. As a team, here is how we work to promote change. We begin by growing first in our community. We started, funded, and mentored five FLL Challenge Teams and assisted with the creation of seven FLL Explore Teams across two Cedarburg Elementary Schools. Because of the Hex Hounds, Cedarburg is now home to two of three divisions in the FLL progression. We engage our community with both FIRST and STEM through outreach events at Cedarburg festivals, hosting robotic summer camps, participating in school-sponsored events, and other events in our community and neighboring ones. We grow our reach through media. By partnering with local news outlets, both in print and on TV, as well as other social media pages, the Hex Hounds are known not only across the state of Wisconsin, but globally. Within the past three years, we've reached over 115,000 people, a population nearly 10 times the size of Cedarburg, Wisconsin.
We bring STEM and robotics into all Cedarburg School District classrooms by advocating for STEM education. We worked alongside both Cedarburg School District staff and local industry leaders to secure funding for STEM from a $59.8 million community-supported referendum. With these funds, we work to both update and expand STEM education across all five Cedarburg School District schools, including bringing STEM and robotics curriculum into all three Cedarburg Elementary Schools, updating STEM spaces at Webster Middle School, and a $16 million remodel of the Technology Education Department at Cedarburg High School, which now includes dedicated space for FIRST Robotics. By integrating STEM curriculum into all levels of education, not only will the image of both FIRST and FRC grow in the minds of students as they progress to the Cedarburg School District, but all students will be prepared for success due to the rapid growth of technology in the 21st century. As a team, we've had both successes and failures, but the success that we pride ourselves in is the one that we create off the field. We're proud of the past 13 seasons of growth and impact our team has had, both on our community and our world, and we cannot wait to see where it takes us in the future.
That's great.
So that kind of summarizes what the award was about, kind of how we went about it. The process for it isn't easy. There's a, an essay they have to go through, an interview, and then a bunch of other steps. We've applied for the award for the past six years, but again, I think the referendum has driven and put us up over the edge, along with our, our media and ability to get in the newspaper. Just as a side note, take a look at the front page of your news graphic tomorrow. Couple other things, just like to show off our robot. I know this team is pretty excited to show you what, what they've built this year and what it can do. So this robot is fairly unique in the fact that it can move in any direction at any point in time. So it can kind of move in that circle. This year's theme happened to be around a nine-and-a-half-inch tennis ball called Cargo, so you can see Max and Leah are holding a blue and a red one. Depending on which team we're on, our robot has to pick that ball up and then shoot it into a hoop that's about eight-and-a-half feet off the ground. Our robot also can climb, so this is a 125-pound machine that can pull itself up in the air. Zach, you want to just kind of show them? So it's got arms that kind of retract, they go up and down. This robot kind of does the monkey bars, if you will, so there's a series of monkey bars. Now, what kind of makes this just really special is the fact that we're finally into our new facility. So through the referendum, we've finally been able to get to that point of feeling good, working in that area, and this is what it, what it produces. Not that we couldn't produce good things before, but everything you see on this bot was produced in-house, so no outsourcing. Everything's made by these guys.
That is remarkable. So does it have a name?
Styx.
Styx?
S-T-Y-X, I believe is the correct spelling.
Oh, okay.
Voted on by team, not so much picked by the coach.
[laughing]
So along with building awesome robots, each, each year is a challenge. Qualifying for the World Championships is a great honor.
Yeah.
It's in Houston this year. If you don't know anything about Houston, 18 hours away.
Yeah.
So right now, the team, not only are we working on modifying the robot for the Wisconsin Regional next week, which is open to the public from the 23rd through the 26th, but also fundraising about $45,000 in the next month to try to get each one of these kids to Houston.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I am just so impressed and so excited. I feel like I'm in the space of like a famous person right now. This is really, really great. Thank you for coming and sharing, and I'm going to put you guys on the spot. I'm curious, you know, you're all seniors, is that what he said? Yeah, so you were able to see it right before the spaces. You've been in before and after. If there's one thing that just, you just enjoyed the most out of seeing that space transformation, I would love to hear it. I'm putting you on the spot. Do we have enough time for this?
Like, it's just being able to rapidly iterate and just absolutely, like, our production time, it went from about three weeks to three days.
Wow.
And so, the whole progress, right? You can sit in the CAD lab and draw up a part on Autodesk, and then Max can, you know, bring it over to the router, and you can have it in your hand by the end of the day. And that's just surreal for, exactly with access, just rapid prototyping, rapid testing, and, you know, making those quick changes on the go.
That is amazing.
I think definitely another thing that's great about the facility too is just how connected and open everything is. I know within, we were in our space in 2019 and 2020, everything, you know, we needed to go talk to our design team, we had to go walk across the hall, but having everything in that one space, it helps, bigger communication skills, a lot stronger, which is something that definitely goes a long way with helping create teams like this.
That's great.
One prime example of that communication is the integration of the sets of, you know, usually even the campus side of the team and the design side of the team are pretty removed from the programming side of the team, but because we were all able to share that big design space, many inputs came into one, and, you know, we really like expanded our use of the set of, which makes it more consistent and just makes it better for you.
That's amazing. We got one guy there. I'm not letting you off the hook.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I mean, we are, mentioned is just the utilization of the spaces and just being able to just, I don't know, it just feels like more of a team, because you can kind of like see what everyone's working on, everyone's kind of, it just feels like more of like one complete process rather than several smaller processes.
That's, that's great. You guys should be so proud. I am so impressed. And good luck. We're all watching closely, and either way, just fantastic work. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Is the, is the regional? Is the regional in Milwaukee, is that at the arena, the older arena? UW Pantherina, yes.
Ah.
Open to the public. You just got to fill out a smart waiver and wear a mask.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question of the seniors? Anyone care to share their plans after CHS?
Yeah.
I think we're all planning on going to college. I know myself, mechanical engineering. I'm planning on going to go off the curve a few times for your mechanical training.
I'm going to MSU for mechanical engineering.
I'm looking at Biden for engineering and potentially for the policy.
Any Purdue people here? Ah, it's an engineering school. I'm making a plug.
Go Badgers.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. I want to go back to high school.
I think we're into consent agenda.
All right.
So board members, before you, you have the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the February 16th, 2022 school board meeting, the budget report, which includes the financial information, summary of accounts, check register, check detail, and credit card transactions, and the personnel report, which Mr. Farner will give an update on.
I have a boilermaker in my family.
All right.
Quite a few, actually. This evening, we have a couple resignations effective at the end of this year. Teachers Mackenzie Clapper and Annie Gurkey, both at Westlon. Also excited to have our first teacher contract for next year. Before you, Joel Cohn, a specially teacher at the high school. And a special announcement, retirement of someone...
She's here.
Way right there.
Yep, way in the backyard.
All right. Someone I've enjoyed working with the past nine years, has been here 19 years, the senior ranking administrator in the district. Jane Holk has announced that she'll be retiring at the end of this year as the Parkview Elementary Principal, so we're asking you to approve all of those tonight. 19, I said 18, 18? Seems like 19.
We'll give you 20, Jane. Do you want to come up and say a few words? So if I may, Jane, Jane has been a loyal, dedicated servant who relentlessly focused on student growth during her tenure. She has made Parkview, and positioned Parkview as a standout elementary school in the state and is recognized for their achievement. And we certainly are very thankful and grateful for your service over the years, Jane, and you've made a tremendous impact on your school and, and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been actually hard to talk about, because, so you put me on the spot, and that's what happens. 18 years of my life in this wonderful district, and I was fortunate enough to even have my children come to this district with me and graduate. There's so many things to be proud of here. I have the most wonderful staff. I've hired a lot of them, and they are so dedicated to every child. It's just so gratifying every single day to watch the teaching and learning that happens in our schools. And parent involvement, parent support has been phenomenal, as well as district and board. I'm just so appreciative for everything that we've been able to put in place at Parkview Elementary School. And you're right, we are in the top 10% regularly within the state, and it's just a fabulous school that I know will find great leadership and continue on the great path that they've been on. So thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
Jane, I'd like to add, there's a ton of families who have, to thank you to, aren't here tonight, but thanks from all of them for all you've done.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll a second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, passed. Motion passed? All right, what are we off to next? Superintendent notes?
Yes, thank you. We are continuing with the Cedarburg High School show, so I'm going to ask Casey Bowles, high school principal, to come up. Board members, as you know, throughout the school year, we have schools come and present on their student achievement data and talk about areas of celebration and opportunities. And this evening, it's time to hear from Casey on the high school progress. Casey?
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm excited to celebrate some of the things we have going on at the high school, as well as looking at some of the, the data that we have, some of the goals that, some of the things that I've been personally working on this year, that ultimately some of the goals that we have that will carry through from year to year. So this is kind of what you're going to see in this presentation. District goal, increased student achievement for all students while closing gaps for subgroups. The next couple slides are all data points from the state report card that were shared out with, with all stakeholders earlier this year. Cedarburg High School continues to be one of the top high schools in the state of Wisconsin, significantly exceeding expectation and, you know, high levels of achievement, growth, target, target group outcomes that are in the top of the state, and excellent graduation rates. More of the same, more of the same data, really high levels of achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track graduation rates. This slide, more of the same data, but of note on this is, this is the only slide that actually shows our achievement in comparison to the state. Is there a laser on this? At that point?
Yep.
Okay. So you can see these, not colorblind, but this, the, the smaller bars are the state, the bigger ones are us, across the board. We continue to exceed state averages by, by a great deal in, in all categories. So this is achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track graduation, greatly exceeding state averages in all categories. There are many different ways that we can look at success at the high school level. We can look at things like AP tests, test-taking rates, scores, proficiency scores on those tests, National Merit Scholarship awardees, CTE completers, those would be like Tech Ed strands completing and getting certifications in those areas. We can look at data points like college and career readiness, how many of our students are going on to post-high school education, are they, what kind of success are they having when they get there? We can look at things like grade point average that were pointed out by John earlier. We have, we have really high achieving students in, in the classrooms, and that's reflected in their grades. We can look at things like graduation rate, which was alluded to earlier. We can pay attention to student engagement. That might be, how many students do we have that are participating, participating in a, a sport, an activity? They're in a club. What are our attendance rates like? These are all things that we can track on as a indication of overall student engagement. We're going to look at the ACT on the next slide, which is, it's a big one, as well as the Wisconsin Forward Exam, which are the state mandated assessments that are given at the high school. We can also look at awards, records, championships, and other recognitions, things that Mr. Hanem was alluding to earlier, the Chairman's Award that our robotics club got, you know, U.S. News and World Reports, NICH, Blue Ribbon School Rankings, all of these things, I think, make a comprehensive, take a comprehensive look at, at success at the high school level. So that said, the next slide is primarily the ACT, which is what I'm going to reference as we try to both celebrate the things that are going really, really well at the high school right now and, and have been for a long time, as well as some opportunities for us to do things better. Oh, actually, that's the slide after this one. Here's some more celebrations. So we have the National Council for Women's, Women and Informational Technology. These are all of our, or a portion of our award winners. These are the ones that got photographed, as well as Stacy Lesmeiser was recognized by that same organization as one of the top female computer science teachers in the, in the state of Wisconsin, so that was very powerful. I've got the swim and dive team. We've got the robotics chairman's award. Jenny Spencer, this is a new one, so she won the Code Art Award. I think that's the first time we've ever had a student win that, and I, I believe that's the, out of the whole nation, so really prestigious award. Next to her is Morgan Adams. She won the Rotary Ride Art Award, so her, her artwork is being used to promote the Rotary Cycling Event. We've got Brandon Kemelowski, Kemilevsky, our National Merit finalist, and then our, our girls' basketball team. I think that's the picture after, after winning regionals. So lots, lots of things to celebrate, lot of, lot of great, great success and things to celebrate at the high school right now. Here's the ACT slide. So I'll start by looking at, so these are scatter plots. You'll see that on the left graph, we've got the blue, the blue dots, those are the Grade Nine ACT Aspires. So the way I, I would like to think about those data points are, that's where our students are coming in at. So at the high school level, we have control over what we do within the walls of our building, and these are where our kids are coming at, and our goal is to grow every student to the greatest amount possible. So if you look at kind of the trend of, of where the blue dots are, sometimes they're, sometimes they actually exceed the Grade 11 ACT for the same year, like in, we look at great cohort graduation class 2018, they, the ACT exceeded the blue dot. Here in graduation cohort 2019, the grade, grade nine actually exceeded the ACT. But overall, the data points track each other, so there's a trend. They, they move in, they move in confluence with each other, the, so there's some, I think it's fair to say that these data sets correlate.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
I think I know this, but...
Yep.
So each column, when it says 2018, that's following the 2018 graduation year.
That is the graduation class.
Going back to 2015, 16, 17, so it's following that class and then their growth.
That's correct. Yep. So both of these dates, so if you like, looking at the 2018 bar, since we have a clear line on that, that makes it easy to look at, those are the same, essentially the same kids. Some kids would have moved out, some kids would have moved in, but in cohorts of, you know, 250 to 300 kids, there's going to be a relatively, a small amount of statistical difference between the ninth grade and the 11th grade classes demographically, primarily going to be the same students. So yes, this is comparing apples to apples as far as that's concerned. The, the right graph, so we've, I've removed the Grade 10 Aspire, so we're just looking at the ACT Aspire from ninth grade data, same data that's on the left graph, and then the ACT. I've set trend lines to that, so you'll see the, the blue trend line, that's, that's the overall trend that we're seeing for ACT Aspire scores for kids that are coming into the high school. So, that's ninth graders, it's the overall trend that we're seeing. And then, I'm colorblind, I think it's a red line is the other one. Yeah, so the red line is the trend of our 11th graders when they take the ACT. So, one of the things that we can really celebrate is the change in slope. So, both the slopes are negative, that's not what we're looking for. But the slope of our juniors is less negative than the slope of our freshmen coming in. That's an indication of growth, that's a value add that's taking place at the high school. It's very, that's what you want to see. You want to see that over time, we're impacting the slope of the trend in a positive way. We want that to continue, actually, we need that to grow even faster to be able to achieve another goal, which is to actually have those slopes become positive. We want kids to be growing over time, okay? That's not what we're seeing right now as a, as a trend in comparing, in comparing this year's students to last year's students to the students before that, okay? So, it's not apples to apples, it's different kids, but we would like to see every class coming through achieving at a higher, at a higher rate than the students before them. And we all know that there's been challenges, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of turbulence in the educational environment that could account for this, this trend, but nonetheless, this is a trend we want to turn around. This is ultimately what we want to change. Yep.
Question. So, for the ninth grade, when is that test taken? Is it in the fall when they're brand new to the high school, or is it, I know the ACT is taken later in the year, so what?
Yeah, it's, it's coming, we haven't taken it yet. Yep.
So, it's really after a year of being in ninth grade for the ninth grade test?
Correct. Yep, so we do have some influence on, on this. And then we have, so approximately, we have, we have like two and a half years to influence student achievement at the high school, from the time they walk through the door as a freshman to when they take the ACT at the beginning of March. So, yes, I mean, it's, it's fair to say that's, that we've had some impact on that blue line already, and, but I don't have, we don't have data to suggest what that impact was. We would, we would have to do some pretty sophisticated correlation study between the eighth grade forward exam at Webster to the ACT, make sure that those things are tracking on the same student learning outcomes, that they can actually be compared against each other. That's not work that I have done yet, but it's work that I'm very interested in doing, so that we can actually even say more about, alright, what's the difference we're making between day one as a freshman to ninth grade aspire testing, which we're, which we're doing here in a, in a few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So, continuing to improve the, the growth, so change, increase the amount that we're changing, the slope of those two lines, also increasing overall achievements, like basically just bumping up all those dots, just lifting everything up higher. Those would be kind of the two, the two goals that I would like to, well, there's three. Make the slopes positive, change the slopes even more from freshman year to junior year, more positive, and then increase overall achievement. So, those would be the three kind of database goals that we would have. Questions about this before I go on? Because this is the only data I'm really going to present, the rest of it is all kind of practice.
I just have one more. So, for 2024, that one's pretty low. Would that, were some of the kids virtual taking that, or how did that test run? Do you know?
Guys, it was all in person?
Yeah, that was, that would have been, yeah, this year, right?
Oh. Okay. Everybody was onsite to take the test.
So, it brought the virtual learners to school to take the test.
Okay, but that was a year where we were doing both virtual and in-person, which, okay.
There was a chunk of students who were virtual, we then brought them and they tested in separate locations. We did, yeah. Okay. There was about 20% of the high school that was virtual. Of those, I don't know which ones are ACT takers, but out of the whole population, 20% are.
Okay, thanks.
And I guess another, another piece of pertinent data is that, you know, this year's class, so the class of 2022, this data point right here was the second overall achieving ACT score in the whole state of Wisconsin. I think the, the only, the school that had a better average or average composite had like 30 kids in it. So, I mean, this is not dire, we just, we want, we want to do better. So, I think the, the goal here tonight is both to celebrate the things that are going really well, but also present the board with, here's, there's some opportunities here, we can do some things to improve. And so, that's what I'm here to present.
Oh, go ahead. I had a question on the growth percentage, the 98.3. Can you explain what that means? It's a couple of slides up on the priority area scores, it says 98.3. Is that, on average, 98% of kids are growing? Can you explain that?
It's, it's a formula that the state uses. It's not a percentage.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, even in...
It's a calculation.
Okay.
And I don't know, there's, it's knowable, but it is also a function of different, we're not, not all schools are calculated the same way, if I understand this correctly, like the number of free and reduced lunch kids that you have, the number of students that you have that are on an IEP, the number of students that achieved at a lower, lower level of proficiency in years past, those numbers and where they performed is compared to where they are at a future date, and then they come up with this calculation. I do think that 100 is the, is the most you can get, though.
I know that when we met with Eric Larson, kind of the data, he indicated that we do have some of the highest growth rates across the board in the state typically.
Yeah.
I was amazed at, and they do that from coming in from like eighth grade, how they grow through the track of years with, with all of the tests for the state assesses, the aspire and all of the previous.
That, that was one of the things, and this is what I, I put in my, I got to add some verbiage to the parent letter that went out with the report card. I think one of the things that was, that truly amazed me coming in here new was that our growth rate was as high as it is, and our overall achievement rate is as high as it is. Usually, you can have one or the other, but not both. Usually, when you have really high achievement, just because they're, they're already performing at such a high level, there isn't as much room to grow.
Exactly.
But we're doing both, so it's really, there's something very unique and special going on here.
But that's kind of why I pointed that out, because typically you don't. When you have less to grow, you don't see as much growth.
Yeah.
Because there isn't as much room to grow in, so it's interesting. And then, when you go back to the ACT data, I want to make sure I'm reading this right. It looks like, right, in those school, or in those graduation years, we are trending down, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The state did trend down in the past year.
Yeah.
But we're trying to hold ourselves to kind of a higher...
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can, we can really celebrate how well we're doing compared to the state. I think it's very, it's very safe for us to do, but if we want to push and we want, I, I think it could also hold us back. Maybe I'll just say that. I think if we keep looking at how the state's doing and saying, the state's trending that way, then, then we, we can too, and it's okay. I think we can do better than that. I want to, we're, we're bucking the trend, I want to buck the trend even, even more than we are, and I feel like we have a good plan to do that. We have the right people to do that, and that's, I guess, kind of what my next slides are about, how, how I think we should go about doing it.
Just before you go on, Casey, the, I did look at slide number six, and it does say for the growth, it gives some detail, for, we were 98.3, the state average is 66, and it is a hundred-point scale, so there's quite a spread there between the state average. And for achievement, we're at 89.7 for English Language Arts and 86.7 for Mathematics. The state average for English is 61.3, and for Mathematics, it's 55.5. So, again, like 30-point spreads between them. So, I agree with you, looking at the state numbers, we shouldn't spend a lot of time on that, we just need to look at our numbers and say, how do we do better?
Yeah, be in a better version of ourselves. Yep. Alright. So, here's the goal for the high school, and I bolded the word intentionally, so that, you know, intentionally by that I mean deliberate, you know, thoughtfully, actually just putting all of our focus and effort into increasing student achievement for all students. So, that's just, you know, maximizing growth, maximizing achievement, doesn't matter what target group you're in, we're, we're coming after all of our kids with an equal amount of intentional instruction, focused interventions, and thoughtful practice. So, this is my first year, so I, I got here in the middle of June, I officially started July 1. A lot of my time to this point has been spent doing these things, so I wanted to kind of let you know where my focus has been. Building situational awareness, by that I mean, you know, immersing myself in the community, getting to know our systems, it's a new, I'm in a new state. Wisconsin has a different educational environment than Wyoming did. Kind of immersing myself and learning as much as I can about our educational environment and kind of what the different levers are that can be pulled around here to make the, the changes that we're ultimately going to want to see. Establishing and strengthening relationships, I've met a tremendous amount of people. We've got over 100 staff members at the high school, I know all their names, and I'm working hard to get to know even more about them as, as human beings and figuring out what their strengths and, and where they want support and, you know, building, building those connections and through the community. I did come in with some of that built in already, having been from here, my family's from here, I've, you know, graduated with a lot of people that, that live here still. But reconnecting and rekindling some old friendships as well has been a part of what I've been doing. Improving internal and external communications. We've updated the newsletter, we've got a more rapid information flow out of the high school to our stakeholders. I feel like John and I have done some good work, we, and Kendall, Kendall has been helping us a lot with our social media presence and making that prettier, I don't know what the right, more aesthetically pleasing, getting it out more timely. She does a great job with that. Communicating better within our system. How do we communicate with our staff, making sure that they are, you know, up to date with what's going on, that we're, we're planning our professional development days in great detail, getting that information out more readily for them, so that people can use the time that we give them more intentionally. We're doing the foundational professional learning community work, so establishing our teams, starting those processes, developing meeting norms, making sure that we're identifying the proper amount of times and giving the direction to our staff so that they can begin having the collaborative conversations around improving student achievement that needs to happen. And then, lastly, just systems analysis, taking a look at how we do things, asking a lot of questions about how did we get to where we are, and what, systems that I would be talking about, like, how do we schedule? Why is our schedule the way that it is? How do we evaluate teachers? Why do we do it that way? Can we do that better? How are recruiting teachers, staff members? How are we making sure that we, we're casting the biggest net and, and attracting as many as possible? How are we, how are we scheduling our facilities and working with buildings and grounds so that we can, you know, get the most out of the space that we've got? How do our budgets work? What are these light items for? Why is this there, that there, et cetera? So, that's been most of my, most of my work to this point, and I'm feeling like I've got a good footing in, in all of these areas. There'll continuously be an area to improve, but these are kind of where I've, I spent most of my time. And through that process, we've come up with these kind of talking points about where we, areas of focus and where we'd like to go with the high school. One, we're super blessed to have an incredibly talented instructional team. I'm blessed to have an incredibly talented and supportive administrative team at the high school. We want to keep our good people. We want to recruit the best people that we can from the marketplace when we need to. And then we want to, once we get people in, into our team, we want to grow them and promote them within. We want to keep them motivated to continue to grow and do better every single day for our students. We want to build systematic resiliency. So, this is adding core redundancies and curricular implementation protocols. What I mean by that is, we don't want any of our core programs to get up and walk out the door with a teacher. We want to have multiple people that can pick up and take our programs when somebody leaves. So, this in, on the ground, this means that multiple teachers are teaching all of our classes that we say, these are core, these are essential to the, the learning outcomes for our students. These are the, the courses that are ultimately going to impact, those graphs that I was showing you, some of our classes impact those graphs more than others. They all impact them, but we want to put our, put our resources and our energy towards those courses that maximize impact and make sure that those are protected against turnover. Curricular implementation protocols, essentially by that I mean, I want Canvas, so Canvas is our student learning system, so this is where kids go on and they can access the curriculum that the, the teachers put on. We want that to be a, a packageable entity that can be passed from person to person. So, in the, in the event that we do have a staff member that leaves for one reason or another, we have a ready-to-go continuation of service model where you can go, here's your Canvas. You teach this, this is your, this, this is your roadmap to student success that we are continuously improving through the PLC process, but on day one, you get that. You don't have to create the wheel, you, you don't bring what you, what you did at your previous school, you're doing the Cedarburg way, we've thought this through, we, we, we want to know your feedback on it, but on day one, we're doing this. So, it's, it's, it's ready to go. Collaborative culture. So, how do we improve what we do? We got to share good ideas. We want to promote good ideas within the system, so we need to build the systems that allow that to happen. So, we need our teachers to have time to plan together, to share what works and what doesn't work. And how do we know what works and what doesn't work? Assessments. We have common assessments, my next one's all about assessments, so I won't stick on that too much, but it's really, this, this one is about sharing good ideas, also sharing bad ideas, so we don't repeat bad ideas, too. That's the continuous improvement model. It requires a certain amount of trust and vulnerability and willingness to be a team player, so there are some real social aspects to this model that need to be cultivated as well, so that everybody feels like they're, we're all in this together, we're, we're building this course together, and, you know, ultimately, it's what, what's best for kids that we want to promote. It's not necessarily, that's my idea or your idea, we want good ideas and we want to grow those. Reducing system noise. This revolves around having common assessments, common curriculum, and uniform grading practices. So, I know one of the things that we, we talk about a lot is, you know, social emotional health and, you know, mental health, mental well-being. I feel like one of the things that we do at the high school, and it's not just our high school, I think this is a lot of high schools, we make it hard for kids to be successful unintentionally by having different sets of rules in every single course. Some courses grade with categories, some are total points, some are term-weighted, some are not. I mean, there's, there's probably as many different ways of grading as there are teachers in this building. To me, that's an artificial boundary to student success. This is not, this is not preparing kids for college, although that might be an argument you might hear, that colleges are this way, so, but just because I think that's also a bad model, doesn't mean that we should recreate bad models. If we can take hurdles to student success, we want kids focusing on achieving learning outcomes and not putting their time and energy into trying to figure out what the rules to the game are, so they know, you know, I've, because kids are making choices all the time. Do I want to practice my free throws? Do I want to study for a test? Do I want to study for the quiz? Do I want to do this worksheet? They have to prioritize their lives, and without a common system for, for grading or assessments or knowing what the weight is, they can't actually do that, or they have to put a lot of time and effort and go, well, you know, in, in Mr. So-and-so's class, that's worth 30% of my grade, although it's only five points, that's, you know, why are we make, why are we doing that to a kid? Let's, let's cut the, the, the boundaries out and let's have one to the degree that we can, let's have a single system that kids can understand, that they know that it's going to translate with them from class to class and from year to year, so they can just get good at learning and not have to get so good at playing the game. Common curriculum. If I'm taking Biology from Mr. A or Mrs. B, it's the same biology, it's the same chemistry. We're teaching the same content at the same time or nearly the same time, and we're assessing that on the same test. I think that will reduce some of the noise, we'll be able to make better decisions about what's actually working and what isn't, because it's more scientific, it's more intentional. Last is to make sure that all of our systems are focused and efficient with relationship to our goal. Increasing high-quality teaching and learning, so everything focused on that. Increasing high-quality teaching and learning, so everything focused on that. If it's not adding to that, you know, you know, if it's, if we have some process that's in place that doesn't actually further that goal, let's, let's get rid of it. Let's keep our systems tight and focused on teaching and learning and ensuring that all kids are achieving at a high level by design, or just, that's what we do. Questions on, on that?
I have some common thank questions. Um, well, first comment is, I'm glad that you reflected on the year one, on, on your first year, right? Bringing that forward on that reflection, I mean, it's a unique space, you only get that once when you're new to a school, right? And that lens will never be the same as that first year, so I appreciate you bringing that forward because it's a really great opportunity to just bring a fresh set of eyes and to look at things, and I think that action items really speaks to that. I'm excited to hear about uniform grading, I think that makes total sense, makes common sense too, right? Like, why have kids trying to figure out different grading scales when really they should be thinking about, okay, how to learn, what am I learning, critical thinking, there's so much more substance there than how to get that grade? So I'm excited for that. Question, my question is, is that something you guys are like working on to implement next year? What does that look like?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a process, we've been talking about it. Grading is an area that teachers hold very near and dear to their heart. Yes, and I, and me too, and they, and people have experiences that they feel, they get really comfortable in the space that they worked in for a long period of time. And so I wanna honor that.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like we've, we've been talking about this as a staff off and on over the course of the whole year, and, and I'm hearing the, um, the anxieties, and so we're kind of working through that.
Yeah.
Um, I think over the course of the next year, we can get, and I think we can make steps that it will be more uniform to start next year, but ultimately, I believe that through the PLC process, which hasn't completely gotten off the ground, we're not, we're not situated in a, in an advantageous way to make PLCs work, we've got all the structures. Our, um, resource time in the morning, amazing, I mean, that's the smartest thing that I think a schedule can have in it, I'm very impressed by that. The collaboration time, that, that the late start for kids on Thursdays, powerful. I mean, we're, we're not even scratching the surface for how powerful that time can be. It's the organizational structure of teachers as experts in content areas and the lack of overlap and sharing of those core classes that's limiting our ability to share, collaborate, cause it, people aren't teaching the same things. Um, so, yeah, so we need to do, and that process is taking place right now.
Oh, yes.
So we're redoing the schedule, we're talking about, all right, who's gonna teach what? Who's willing to pick up this extra thing? Because it, on the ground, what this means is, the teacher that used to teach two classes every day now has to teach three different ones. What are you gonna pick up? How can we align prep times so that if you and I are both teaching chemistry together, that not only do we have Thursdays to collaborate as a department, but on our prep time on O-days, we share and we can plan together? We can look at our assessment data and go, you know, why did your, what did you do that was so much more effective than what I did? Cause I wanna copy that, I wanna steal from you, and then you walk me through or, or whatever. We're going over our assessment to make sure that we have the right questions on there. Are we, are we really getting at, are we asking the questions to the students that we need to know the answers to? Are we asking them the questions that we're actually teaching? Is it aligning? Um, those conversations aren't really happening because we're not organized that way.
Yeah.
So I feel like getting that in place, getting those structures in place next year will ultimately lead us to be able to go, you're grading differently than I am, your grade scale is different than mine, how could we get more similar? What are we doing as a school? Um, how uniform does it have to be? Does it have to be identical? Or can we just agree on, and this is where I would like to be for next year, can we just agree on some ground rules? That these are the, this is, this is the bare minimum of uniformity that we're, we can tolerate?
Yeah.
And then go from there.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, very impressed by it. I think, um, as I read through these earlier in the week, I was, I had several questions you answered very well during your presentation, so I thank you for that. But I agree, I think a lot of these ongoing action items are not only one year, but they're multi-year, it might last five to ten years, some might be every year, you wanna continuously improve and tweak and modify, but I think you're on to something, so I appreciate those efforts.
Thank you.
And your energy, it's infectious.
I love it here, I am so grateful for this opportunity.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I'm just overjoyed, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Great update. All right, we have Ben next.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so, real quick, uh, we're very happy to announce that, uh, this year marks the thirtieth anniversary of our partnership with Airmark, who's our food service provider. Uh, I would say that, uh, the years I've, that I've been here, it's been a tremendous relationship working with them. Not only are they a fantastic program from a financial perspective, uh, but also from a service perspect- perspective for our students. Uh, they provide a wide range of meals for our students, a lot of variety, uh, they're always coming with new meal plans. In addition to that, they also meet the requirements for the federal law for national school lunch program, so it's a great partnership, uh, and we're very happy, uh, to be working with them still after all these years. Um, it really goes, uh, says a lot about the, the staff that we have, that we work with, with Airmark. Uh, they go out of their way to make sure we're happy and satisfied with their service. Um, and as a way to recognize the thirty-year anniversary, they are presenting, uh, the school district with a five thousand dollar scholarship, scholarship for our students. Um, this can be used however we see fit, um, but I thought it was a very generous act on their part to recognize this significant milestone for us. So I don't know if, uh...
Fantastic. Yeah, come on up, yeah.
I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanna say thank you. Uh, my name is Beth Ann England, and I'm the district manager for Airmark, I oversee the state of Wisconsin. Um, and this is Amanda Giebing, she is your new food service director, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you because she's here in the high school and at all the other schools. Um, and as Ben said, we are just so appreciative, we are just the latest stewards of this partnership, um, but we really value, um, the, our relationship here and the, the partnership that we've had over the last thirty years, so we just wanna say thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for your partnership and the donation, I mean, that's fantastic and thirty years, wow, that's amazing. And I know, I've been on the board three years, and every year, I know Ben's made a point to just mention what a great partnership it's been, and it's not just about the food service, it's about solutioning and bringing new ideas, and for something that's been here for thirty years to continue to bring new ideas to the district, I think is fantastic. So thank you and nice to meet you as well, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
And the new kitchens are amazing.
Ah, yeah.
I know you asked that question of, of the robotics team, so I just wanted to put in a plug.
That's right.
They are beautiful, absolutely, and I know the team really enjoys them, so, thank you for that.
Great.
Thank you so much, thank you. All right, that moves to the public comment section, we don't have anybody signed up, did anybody want to speak on an agenda item? Oh, that means I don't have to read this. All right, okay. Uh, we're gonna move into recommendations, up first, we have the Airmark renewal.
Yep, uh, so the next five agenda items are mine, um, so you're stuck with me for a little while, um, but all of these agenda items have been vetted through Personnel and Finance Committee, um, and have been brought forward by their recommendation. Uh, the first one, we're actually looking at the renewal with Airmark for next year, uh, we didn't time it that way, but it's, it's time of the year, uh, we look at that. Um, so the way it works for renewals with our food service contractor, it's based on a federal program, and so we work within those guidelines for bidding and for renewal. Uh, when we look at renewal, there's a max of what we can go up to, and it's based on CPI. Um, as we, we all know, um, inflation is at a high number for the last, um, twelve-plus months, and so the number they use for CPI is based on a number that's used for food away from home. Uh, so it's a little bit different than the CPI we use for renewals for compensation and stuff like that. Uh, but the CPI that was set for next year was set at seven point seven percent, uh, and we are recommending, uh, renewal at that rate, uh, with Airmark for next year. And really, the reasons for that, um, are because of the needs we're seeing in the system. Um, that increase will all go towards helping with compensation for our staff with helping attract and retain the, the, the staff we have in the system. Um, that's been kind of a hard point this year, uh, cause we're stuck within the, the guidelines of the federal program of what we can do for compensation increases, it's really dictated by that CPI number, um, so this gives us an opportunity to address that issue. And just in the, uh, in addition to the increase in food costs that we've seen recently, uh, we'd be able to kind of keep pace with that, uh, for next year and beyond. Uh, what included with this renewal is also a fifty thousand dollar guarantee from Airmark, um, so if, you know, whatever costs increase, uh, at a rate above what we're expecting, there's still a fifty thousand dollar return at the minimum back to the district, uh, regardless of what happens next year financially.
All right, do I have a recommendation?
I'll move approval. I wish I could get my groceries where they're getting theirs, cause mine are up more than seven point seven percent.
We have a motion.
I will second that.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
All right, uh, so the next one is not an agenda item, we're bringing it forward tonight more, mostly for discussion and to get some guidance from the board as we look at, um, developing and continue to, to build the budget for next year. Again, this is a topic that was before, um, that we discussed at the PNF Committee, um, earlier this month. Uh, but basically, uh, what we're looking at for next year is a high CPI number, um, for negotiations and for compensation increases. Uh, it's set at four point seven percent for next year, uh, as of July first, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, and so we're building the budget based on that number. Um, it's a number that equates to roughly a million-dollar commitment on behalf of the, the board and the district, um, so it is a, you know, uh, significant, um, commitment and a highest number we've seen in probably twenty-plus years, um, based on that, but it's all based on the market. So, uh, we had discussion at the PNF Committee, uh, regarding, you know, what that looks like for next year and beyond. Um, you know, next year, when we look at balancing the budget, it's primarily driven, um, on using the ESTER grant dollars, uh, that we're receiving from the federal government. Um, so that allows us from, some flexibility for this year and next year, uh, to take care of that need. Um, and then we had some discussion what it looks like beyond that and what the next biennial budget looks like from the state, um, just kind of working through those different scenarios. Uh, but what we're looking for tonight is some discussion on, uh, what that four point seven number, uh, looks like for the district, uh, comfort level with the board, um, and if we get, um, a certain level of approval, we'll start to begin the next step of the process, which is negotiations with the teachers' union and, uh, developing those different, um, proposals, so. Anything to add from the PNF Committee members?
Yeah, I'll defer to them first.
I know that there's a lot of unknowns coming with the, um, with the removal of the ESTER grants after the next budget. I also think that being able to provide teachers with as much stability as possible in these times is also really important. If we can do this, um, for this next budget, I, I would love to find a way to do it.
Yes, that's what we talked and discussed, so.
Well, if anyone can get it done, it's Ben, no pressure. I mean, I, I think I'd be in agreeance with that for sure. I, it's, it's high, right? So it's something that we'd have to really, it's different than other budgeting years that you've had to look at, so I think that combing through that in fine detail, having conversations in PNF, right? hashing that out in the committee, um, but absolutely, I think everyone's seeing an increase everywhere, so it seems to be on trend with where all the markets are.
Yeah, we definitely recognize the need for it, uh, it's a matter of what that looks like for the long-term forecast for the district, and we talked through some of that at the committee level, uh, of what, uh, different factors that could play into that, and there's, uh, things that we're optimistic about in terms of the development of the next state budget, and so, um, uh, we're hopeful that those things come through. Uh, but it is kind of unique in that, you know, and usually, we kind of wait to the, we have more certainty in the budget, uh, then we kind of move forward, um, but this is kind of, um, uncertain times, especially the last couple of years, and so, um, based on the need for it, we wanted to, um, make sure it was a, a part of the discussion, um, hopefully we can move forward with it, so.
Are there factors that you're already seeing that could take a hit as a result of it, or is it just something that you're still trying to analyze?
Could take a hit for next year or beyond.
Or beyond.
Um, so the biggest factor we look at obviously is, you know, what, what will our revenue look like in twenty-three, twenty-four and beyond? Uh, so that'll be the next state budget. Um, what we're encouraged by is the recent report on the estimated surplus at the state level, uh, that was above expectations, and so, um, when the state has more money, that gives them more flexibility to build the next biennial budget, um, to put more money towards K-12 education. Uh, we're hopeful that that comes through, uh, especially since the last two years, um, our, uh, revenue increases have stayed flat. As a result, the additional funding from the federal government, which has allowed us to balance our budgets.
Right.
Um, the drawback obviously is that when you have, um, you're using those grant dollars to address recurring costs, um, what do you do once the grant money runs out and you still have the recurring costs?
Right. You would think it would balance with the revenue, but we'll see. And, and is there, there's a, the deposit in the Fund Forty-Six, it looks like a decrease of two hundred, obviously that's for...
It's a increase of two hundred thousand.
Okay.
To bring it back up to five hundred thousand dollar mark that we've had in years prior, uh, last year or, or this year. Uh, it's at three hundred thousand, cause also two hundred thousand was put towards the vintage gym replacement, so, um, so we have that in there now, um, we recognize the need for that long-term and what that could mean, um, and so that's important for us to keep in there as well. Um, and all these pieces will come back to the board through PNF eventually as we get ready for the preliminary board presentation in June. Um, so normally, we don't bring the budget to this level this early, but, uh, we did recognize the need for it as we, um, look at the compensation piece for next year and what we wanna do with that.
Yeah, cause that Fund Forty-Six, especially with, um, having new man in charge of building and grounds, that's so key and important to all the items that are still on that list that need to be addressed, so glad to see that come back, and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I applaud you for bringing it out early, bringing the budget information and the spreadsheet that you put together, and I did look for the same thing, the Fund Forty-Six is still being funded, so that's a great way to do it, I think, so.
Yeah, smart to socialize that percentage, cause it's so different than what we've seen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Perhaps, Ben, you wanna jump down to letter E, if that's okay with you?
Yeah.
Because it's a good segue that fits with the budget.
Yep.
And PNF's decision.
Yep, that is a nice segue, uh, cause another line item you'll see on the budget breakdown, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three is a line item for the teacher compensation plan. So as a recap of where we're at, at this point, uh, a couple of years ago, the board committed to a three-year, um, teacher comp plan, which would, uh, commit two hundred thousand dollars to compensation over, uh, that, that three years, so six hundred thousand dollars total. Uh, this is the last year of that commitment, and so when we put that, um, plan in place, we always knew we'd come back and revisit it and say, okay, what are our next steps beyond this year? Uh, three years we can commit to, cause we can know the financial landscape at that point, um, but we always planned to bring it back and have a discussion of what that looks like. Um, so we did bring it forward to Personnel and Finance Committee earlier this month, had a discussion, um, of what that looks like, um, for next year, uh, it's included in the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, we thought it'd be important to bring it to the board for full discussion and, um, you know, action on that, so we can, again, um, kind of take a little more, um, momentum earlier rather than later as, uh, we look towards the, kind of the hiring season that kicks off, uh, this spring, so.
Yeah.
Uh, this, what we're looking at, um, like I said, we did three years, cause we could, we knew, at that time, that was the first year of the biennial budget, so we know what, we knew year one and two, and three was the uncertain year, and so we said, we, we can make year three work, uh, if need be, but we know one and two, so we're a little more confident there. Uh, our plan for this is to commit to next year at least, um, and say, you know, we, we kind of know what that looks like, uh, we can commit to that, and then revisit it next year, once we have a better idea of what the, the next steps are for the next biennial budget, cause then we can be in that cycle again of doing the first two years and then, you know, having the third year being an unknown, but less of a risk, I guess, or unknown.
That was my question, so after this year, you think you could maybe potentially even have a commitment of more than just a year to a year?
Yeah, we at least revisit it and have that discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, cause we'd have more things that we know about, you know, the fina- financial forecast moving forward.
Right.
Make it easier to commit.
Yeah, I think we had discussed doing it earlier, just to give, to guarantee that it's hope, gonna be there for next year, but with all the unknowns for the next two years, we thought we can just do the one year.
Yeah, right, that makes sense.
That makes sense to me too, the one year, we wanna continue to do it every year, and that's our hopes to do it, and, but I don't think we can look beyond one year right now, just so we figure out what federal dollars and state dollars.
Yeah, it's even more difficult now to predict that, I mean, even in years past, I mean, even in years past, if we were in the same situation, at least we knew we kind of had a range of, okay, the per pupil increase could be for revenue 100 to 200 per pupil, and we can kind of get that range. Now, it's really unknown. There's a wide range of estimates that are out there, and so there's a lot of uncertainty. So one year is definitely a good plan for making sure we're able to commit beyond that.
I'd like to see us do that.
One thing I'd like to see is it to increase, right? I mean, it's the same amount as it was four years ago, and so we're in a different market. So I think that would be the other subset. Obviously, you guys are going to look at that, but budget's constrained. I'd like to see that amount go up.
So in essence, Board members, you're extending that three-year comp plan to a year four.
Right.
That's what we're doing, and the timing is right. And I know kind of to speak very favorably to this and endorse this, that doing it now sends a great message to our teachers. That's what we just discussed at PNF, that we are committed to this $200,000 for compensation and CPI. And I think that's a great message to retain teachers, recruit teachers, something you saw on Casey's slide. So all of that is coming together, and that's why we thought we'd bring it forward, and PNF thought they would bring it forward at this time as well.
Yeah. Well done doing it early.
Yeah, so that would be an action item.
Yeah, so do I have a recommendation?
I would recommend taking the teacher comp plan to a fourth year.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll go back to C.
C, all right. So we are looking at the renewal of our athletic trainer contract. We currently work with the Orthopedic Hospital of Wisconsin. That three-year commitment is expiring as of the end of this summer, and so we are working on renewing that. This contract, like we said, like the other agenda items we discussed at the PNF Committee level, this new contract would be a five-year commitment. And as a reminder, this agreement with OHA is no financial commitment on our end for the District. It's a $0 contract with them. And in fact, as part of this agreement, they're including a financial contribution to the District in the amount of $10,000 annually that can be used towards the Cedarburg Athletic Program. So when we talked about at the committee level, we talked about the great relationship we currently have with OHA, the positive relationships that they have with students and the athletic program in general, and then additions to that is the generous financial contribution on their end towards the District and the program. So at that point, we recommend bringing it forward to the Board for full approval.
And did we say at the committee that that donation was going up from 5,000 to 10,000?
Yep.
Wow. Not often that it's no cost and you get money. How does that work? That's pretty great. Do I have a recommendation here?
So moved to approve the Orthopedic Hospital of Wisconsin contract as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And thank you, John, for your work on this as well.
Thank you. All right, item D.
Yep. All right, so letter D is a resolution for the prepayment of our bonds that we have within Fund 38. So our Fund 38 debt holds all of our obligations that are within our revenue limit. Fund 39 would be anything outside of that, typically referendum-related. So this debt obligation is within that revenue limit, so any debt payments we have take away from the expenses or capacity we have within the general operational budget. That debt payment per year is just over 200,000. And so what we're looking at tonight is to actually prepay that because there's only three years left on that commitment, so just under $700,000 of principal remaining on that. Two things, two ways it would benefit the District if we had that prepayment. First of all, by prepaying it now, instead of paying it off for the next three years, we'd save on interest costs, just over $30,000 over that time period. So that goes back to the District that we can use on something else. And the other reason we'd be looking at to prepay it is it would allow us to free up that line item in our budget to allocate to somewhere else. So that was a big part of what we're looking at in terms of developing the '22, '23 budget. We can take that line item of 230,000 and reallocate it towards something else in the budget, probably the compensation piece. And so based on those two things together, that's why we're bringing it forward tonight for approval by the Board.
That makes sense. I'm always wondering how the math is working in Ben's brain, so there you go. There's an example right there.
And the way we pay it, because obviously we have, you know, it's a $685,000 payment now as opposed to over the next three years. Over the last couple of years, as you know, we've added to fund balance, and so we'd be using that fund balance to pay it down and still be in a good position for our overall fund balance amount. And so that's how we'd be basically prepaying it this time.
Okay.
And whenever we're able, I always like paying off debts early, so if you have money, it's always a good thing to do. So I'll make the motion to pay off Fund 38 early as presented.
I would second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Well done, Ben. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Great work.
Yeah. All right, moving on to F, teacher renewal.
First, thank you for extending that teacher comp plan. That along with the Board continuing the commitment to the CPI, probably the two single most important things we can do for staff retention. So that's a huge effort right there. Appreciate that. Another effort toward that is getting contracts approved earlier than statutory requirements. And so we bring these forward pretty much about this time each year. Want to give our teachers the assurance that they will have a contract for next school year. And so you have that annual list before you of the renewing contracts that we would ask for approval. Also, a shorter list for the part-time teachers that we would be extending contracts to. They're not covered under the same statute. They're handled a little bit differently. They don't automatically renew if no action is taken, but we do extend them contracts in a similar manner as the full-time people when we are assured that we wouldn't need those positions for next year. So we ask for approval of all those contracts.
Looks good. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the contracts.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Conrad.
Appreciate it.
Yep. We're getting like the full landscape tonight.
Yeah, a lot of business.
Yeah.
So tonight, we have in front of the Board our annual autism intervention consultant contract, a starting agreement with Elm Brook, who are one of a few districts that hold her contract. And that's how we have our consultant services set up for the students who have autism and other similar needs. So we're just asking for the Board to approve that contract or agreement tonight as it's presented.
It's a yearly contract?
It is. It's a yearly agreement. Hasn't changed.
I would move we approve the 2022, 2023 Elm Brook agreement as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Ted, oh, you got another one.
Safety drills.
Yes.
Tonight, we have in front of you our safety drills. We do these in the fall and in the spring. So tonight, we have our spring safety drills, our violent intruder response drills in front of you. You have four buildings. Webster will be coming to you in April, but you have four of the five buildings in front of you tonight to review. We don't present that openly as we want to make sure that, you know, I ask only in terms of how we're approaching those and that you're aware of what we're doing. It's also an obligation of Act 143 that the Board reviews those within 30 days of the actual drill. So we're staying compliant in terms of getting those to you tonight for review. No action needed, just review.
Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last action item is regarding our donations. There are a number of donations, four of them, Board members. The first is a donation, $30,862.76 from the Cedarburg Education Foundation. This donation will be used to support K-12 STEAM programs in our, all five schools. The next donation is the amount of $5,000 from Airmark Food Service. This donation will be used to support CHS student scholarships. Next donation, the amount of $500 from GenMet Corporation. This donation will be used to support our CH Robotics program as they make their way to Worlds. And the last donation is an amount of $1,000 from Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club. This donation will be used to support the CHS dance program. I'd ask that those donations be approved in consent form.
Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just how proud we are as a district to see these donations, donations from Airmark, donations from OHA. We're very fortunate and very lucky, so it's pretty remarkable.
Yeah, thanks to all of them. It's awesome.
Yeah, it's amazing. Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to committee reports. And that's me for curriculum because my other guys aren't here. All right. Well, so we had a pretty thorough update from the World Language Department on resources for French and Spanish. It was pretty neat. Makes me want to go take French. I think those were going to come to the Board, but they weren't on the... They're coming, okay. Yep. We also got an update on the 4K through 8 social studies program review. So a lot of work being done in that space. It takes multiple years. It kind of got a little bit of a hit because of COVID, but they're back on track. So we'll probably see more updates coming, if not this year, but... In the fall, yep. And then something that actually Casey alluded to earlier was the transition for content management system and really feeds into your ability to get the curriculum in one place and let it live with Cedarburg and not with the educator. As much as educator puts their piece to it and expounds on it, it's important that that becomes District property so that we can use it in case someone leaves or moves into another grade level. So that was a pretty neat update to be able to hear about the work that's being done there on the technology front. So probably more to come as Kristin's working on that diligently. That's all I got. Who do we got next? PNF, anything more you guys want to mention?
I think we covered all of it.
Yeah. You had a big meeting. And BNG?
So I do have a few things just to mention from the Building and Ground Committee meeting. First of all, Brian walked us through a pretty extensive building roof review of all the roofs in the District, and it was impressive. There is an issue with the west lawn roof, and there are pieces to that that are going to need to be replaced sooner than later. And I think we talked about maybe getting some estimates maybe in the fall so that we're ready to go like a year from now and get that taken care of. He brought to our attention some issues with the vintage gym floor that is maybe not holding up as it should be. And he's taking steps to have that evaluated and see what Schmidt flooring is going to do for us in that. And do you want to add anything to that?
We had an inspector come in Monday. He is a statewide inspector, runs classes on training different companies to install force, make license contractors to install force. Came in on Monday and ran a very in-depth inspection. Kind of expect that inspection report in the next month or so, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks. Based off of that inspection, we'll decide further action.
Did we just have worked on that floor?
It was reclaimed.
It's brand new?
In October.
Okay, I was leaving something out here. This is a brand-new floor.
And that's the big issue because there's a one-year warranty, so... And the contractors are saying it's all normal, right?
Yeah.
So what are the issues?
From what they've been telling us is the floor will bounce back to normal. Basically, what has happened is the floorboards have contracted so much that they're starting to split. Due to a certain finish that they use, we're getting what's called panelization, where the boards have essentially moved together, and they haven't allowed for contraction. And due to that, we're seeing split boards. And the worry is, is now as they start to expand, that they're going to expand and actually come off.
Yeah. Sounds like a subfloor issue. I have a husband in construction.
You're hired.
Okay, well, keep us updated. That's, yeah, okay. So that takes us...
Kate, did you have more?
Oh, sorry, Kate.
Just a couple more ideas.
Yeah, keep going.
I know there are, there's a list of summer work projects that Brian is going to be attending to, including some door and window replacement around the District. Kirsten had a number of informative updates just on information technology as far as all the upgrading that she's doing on a continual basis. It was pretty informative to, eye-opening of how much actually goes into keeping all of the buildings up and running. And then the high school parking lot is an item that's come up a couple of different times. There needs to be some replacement or some repair done, and we've started some discussion on, you know, how far do we take that? Do we do just little piecemeal repairs, or do we look at a complete overhaul? And we kind of talked about, down the road, I think we want to take that to the full Board and get everyone's input on what exactly the different options are.
And what are the issues there?
We are unsure what to do with the parking lot. Reason being is it needs a replacement. We're not exactly sure where to spend our money. So part of that is, do we redesign it? Do we just replace what we have? A redesign would include what we believe is a safer model. It would also include a few extra parking spots. If we just repave it, it's a little bit of a cheaper cost. From my perspective, I'm not sure if I should be repairing it if we're just going to end up replacing it anyways. So we're just looking for some direction.
And probably get a menu of options. What, didn't we do work on the high school parking lot during the referendum? Or did... Oh, yeah.
We talked about it, but we put it in what we call the parking lot, meaning off to decide, we'll deal with this if there's extra money available.
Yeah.
And we decided not to proceed with those projects and say, we'll just need to do it through general operations.